Thank you.
All right, before we move into the public comment period, I would like to make a comment on last week's meeting on the gazebo issues. Town council discussed the issues in general, but no specific action was discussed or acted upon. Town council was looking for a balance between all parties and uses in the gazebo area. We are in the very early stages and there will be numerous future meetings to discuss any possible changes. The biggest point I would like to make, there was never no discussion of closing down Family Fun Day or any other event. It was never discussed. And Ms. Berry, would you make the first call, please? And please keep comments to three minutes. Thank you.
The first speaker is Amber Morris.
Could you please state your name and your address for the record? I'm sorry.
Yes, Amber Morris, 3574 Howsville Road, Front Royal, Virginia. Dear Town Council, I'm here tonight to ensure that each of you in the council are aware of what your constituents are asking for from you. Your vote should be an extension of our vote. It needs to be a representation of not only the people's voice, but the interests of the town at large. We currently have no ordinance regarding the Virginia Maintenance Code. It is in my highest hopes that each of you will vote in favor of adopting property enforcement options, preferably option C. As a lifelong resident of Warren County as well as a property owner, it is a shame that the maintenance of these buildings in the town of Front Royal is not enforced. That drives down value, it drives up homeowner's insurance, along with a whole other slew of things, as well as making our town look bad. We need to address all structures in the town. I'm asking that you simply adopt Part III of the Virginia Uniform Statewide Building Code. As an ever-growing town in business and population, it is important that we are maintaining the image of our town and addressing the safety concerns these buildings bear. This will ensure the protection of the public health, safety, and welfare as stated in Chapter 9, Article A, in accordance with 3699 of the Code of Virginia. While a rental inspection program would ensure fair reporting for all property owners across the board, as well as equal housing options, that's not what I'm coming to ask you for. I'm not asking for a rental inspection board. I'm simply asking for the town to adopt and enforce the Property Maintenance Code in full. Hopefully, the county will be next. It is astounding to me that just as the surrounding counties have already done, they are already enforcing it. We are not. Conditions that would affect safe, decent, and sanitary living conditions of persons occupying a residential rental dwelling unit that include the items that violate fire safety, lack of or poor condition of sanitary facilities, absence of adequate heating systems or equipments, items which affect the safe operation of electrical and mechanical systems, items which affect structural integrity of the building, so on and so forth. Winchester was once in the same situation that we are now.
Amber, can you grab that, please?
Sure. Growth is inevitable, but the direction of the growth is lying in your hands with this vote. Surrounding cities such as Winchester adopted it and are currently enforcing a very successful property maintenance program. By the National Order of Economics, we have to be next. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Berry.
If I could remind the audience, that team that we heard was not your time. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. If you have any cell phones, timers, cameras, to turn them on to silence so it won't interfere with anyone's time to speak, that would be great. We want everyone to have their allotted three minutes.
I felt that was a fast one.
Yeah. If you can make sure everything's on silence, everyone gets their three minutes. Thank you.
Do you read the your three minutes back, Amber? I heard the team.
I asked that you vote for option C. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Melanie Salins.
Hello, Melanie Salins, 95 Murray's Drive. I am here to ask you to vote for option C of the proposed maintenance code. I say that as a libertarian who prefers minimal government involvement and as a landlord. So it should mean something when I say to you that option B does not do enough. So how do I, as a libertarian, reconcile wanting to see option C passed? I believe in the non-aggression principle. So when a slumlord allows his property to become a drug den, I see it as an act of aggression towards me because my property value will subsequently fall. When the slumlord next door allows his property to fall into a state of dangerous disrepair, again, I am being aggressed against. My homeowner's insurance rate will subsequently be raised. My house may burn when his catches fire and the vermin from his building will surely also enter my yard. We have been in the market to buy more rental property for at least two years now. We would like to purchase in Front Royal, but the lack of enforcement of basic Virginia State Code has been a major deterrent. We keep our rental property in top condition and get quality tenants. We have found properties in town that we would have been interested in purchasing, properties that we would have renovated and subsequently raised the property value of, and paid more on property taxes on them. Properties we would have filled with quality, tax-paying, law-abiding citizens. But quite frankly, we were scared off by the open-air drug market right across the street or feared that pieces of the neighboring home could literally come crashing down on our property at any time. So instead of people like us purchasing property in town and raising the standard upward, we instead see the trickle-down effect heading in the other direction. Front Royal has become a sanctuary city for slumlords. Front Royal attracts slumlords because we lack enforcement of basic Virginia State Code. This problem will continue to get worse without voting in option C. I value government who remembers that their job is to represent citizens. I'm sure you recognize that there are other laws in place to protect citizens from criminals, laws that prohibit Ponzi schemes, predatory lending, scammers, et cetera, et cetera. Enforcing existing Virginia State Code is merely doing the bare minimum to protect local citizens. We do not want our local government to fight against perceived threats like Family Fun Day and other events at the gazebo. We want our local government to fight against slumlords, drug dens, and the deteriorating buildings that they occupy. I remind Mr. Conley, you had said at the Valley Health vote for the zoning that you took an oath to uphold Virginia law. I would encourage you to remember that as you vote tonight, hopefully for option C. In closing, I would like to say that if the cost of any sort of program like this is an excuse to not vote for it, I would like to remind you that you walked away from hundreds of thousands of dollars that you could have collected by the management fees for Valley Health's bonds, which, by the way, that deal was highly unusual and the EDA refuses to answer me as to how they accepted such a bond deal. I have literally called all of the surrounding localities' EDAs to find out how they handled their hospital bonds and they literally laughed when they read the deal you guys agreed to accept. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Salins.
Mike Salins, 95 Murray's Drive. I'm here to ask you to vote for option C. As a landlord, I couldn't fathom the idea of not maintaining my property that someone was renting. When my wife and I got a call that something was wrong in our rental property not too long ago, we immediately figured out what we had to do. It was midnight. I left my home, I got there, did what I had to do. I left at 1:45 in the morning. Got home about 2:15, went to work at 5:30 because that's what you do. If you're a landlord, you take care of yourself. These are actual people who need a place to live and are willing to pay for it. We have this understanding that if they pay me for the use of my property, I will maintain it and make it safe and comfortable. We actually have it written in the form of a lease. My understanding is that we have a lot of property in town which are owned by only a few investors, of which don't maintain their properties. It causes a number of issues for our town, but I'll focus on one. It destroys property values for those of us who actually care about this town. The crime and drug issues that we have all stem from the housing that isn't being maintained by its investors. The investors are the only ones making money in this town with regard to real estate and it's at the town's expense. By not taking care of property, it lowers property value of all the neighboring houses and prevents new people from wanting to move in. It makes more criminals and drugs in the area as these investors don't care who moves in. Criminals and drugs cause people to not want to come to the area which droppers the amount of Congress Front Royal gets, which lowers the amount of taxes the town gets, and in turn leaves some things upstate. It's an endless spiral. If they would just maintain or even spruce up their properties, it would attract those who take pride in their area and boost the economy. We would benefit from the tax revenue and be able to reinvest in our town. We would be able to buy things like a new radio system, which we cannot afford right now. Just enforce the state law. Give citizens recourse when the landlord puts them in an unsafe situation. We have to start actually managing our town instead of sitting back thinking the backdoor deal is being made on a daily basis or going to keep us... We need to hold everyone accountable in this town, rich or poor, doesn't matter. I'd like to know why I can't buy tax liens for those who have over $100,000 in taxes to the county. Why are only the cheap properties being held at public auction? Just curious. Thank you.
Sean Marie Malone, or Anne Marie?
Anne Marie. I'm not nearly the topic speaker of the last three hours, you have to forgive me. My name is Anne Marie Malone, 303 Skyline Place here in Front Royal. My husband and I actually just recently moved to the area about two years ago. And in that two years, we have had two different rental properties and three massive floods. And this is all due to the fact that there is no code enforcement. There's nobody that comes and checks on the handyman's work after they put patches. There's nobody to really even go to bat for the tenant when the landlord is at fault and refuses to do any of the repairs. Our very first experience, we moved out here, it was a May, a very, very wet rainy May two years ago when we found that our rental property rained inside the house. And had mold specialists out there, was able to prove that it was unsafe. It was an unsafe living environment because of the mold issues in the house. And of course, the actual physical raining inside the house was a problem. After our landlords were getting excessively aggressive because they did not want to fix the problem, I went to the county and went to the clerk to try to start an escrow account in which to pay my rent to force my landlord's hand. I still wanted to do everything correctly and above board. Did not want to not pay my rent. I was never and will never be a tenant like that. The county literally looked at me like I grew two heads. Had no earthly idea what I was talking about when I asked for a tenant. I believe it was called an assertion. I needed to fill out. Had no earthly idea what was going on. This is a problem. We live on the East Coast. There is nothing but all kinds of unhealthy situations. And if we don't manage them, for the renters, they're going to continue to get sick, which I can actually attest, I've been so sick these last two years because of the mold and just the unmaintained structures. My husband and I have got so many medical bills now on my behalf that I'm not sure we can ever buy in this lovely area. We love it here. We don't want to leave here. But I can't trust that our town is going to take care of its constituents in which to make sure that we do have safe living environments. Whether you're renting or whether you're buying, I just don't have that trust anymore and it's unfortunate. Two days ago, with all the rain, not two days ago, I'm sorry, yesterday, the house we're living in that flooded two weeks after week. We ran from one. The landlord, the new landlord, was aware of why we were having to run so quickly that our lease was able to be broken so we could leave because our landlords were not willing to fix it. She knew what we were getting into or what we were running from and put us in a home with water damage. Put us in a home that flooded within two weeks of us being there with all of our stuff in the basement because we hadn't had a chance to move out or, you know, actually move in and unpack yet. And so we had to move and incur the cost of moving twice in 20 days. This is ridiculous because there was nobody to help me out two years ago. Is that my time? No, okay. I'm sorry. Anyway, so I will get to the point. I would love for you to vote for option C. Option C is the only thing that gives even the remotest bit of protection to people like my husband and I who want to be in this area, who want to stay in this area, but also feel that we're entitled to safe and healthy living conditions. I do have pictures on my phone if anybody would like to see them after, but other things in our development that aren't safe. You know, messed up sidewalks, kids playing on them and everything's all monkey and crooked and there's no handrails. And these are different, these are safety code things that shouldn't be enforced because we don't have that in place. Nobody has a way to force the hand of these landlords. We pay our rent, we pay our taxes. We just want what's right. That's all. So yes, so right now, two years later, we are actually, we have our ceiling open and I can see up into daylight from my roof. And you can actually see where there was once water damage before and they just went in and put a patchwork on it. They just stuck a board up there and said, "That's it. That's going to fix the roof." And that's just not okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Brian Malone.
How you doing? My name is Brian Malone. Just heard from my lovely wife. I'm going to come from a different approach. I read through the itinerary and it only really seems that option C is the most logical for all sides of the, all parties. Option A and option B don't seem to do anything in the leave-out. Option A is clearly absolutely nothing. Option B leaves out dangers. It's stated in the update, updated down the page. And the rest of them are going to ultimately add taxes to the town, hiring more people, adding boards, et cetera, et cetera. Option C is the only one that puts basically everything on the town and on the landlords. Government is here to protect the people. It's basically why governments exist at all. Work, that's why they're supposed to exist. So just from a pure logic standpoint, option C is the only one that benefits everyone. That's all I have to say. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick Steele.
Good evening. I just want to say a few words about the Family Fun Day. Mr. Mayor, thank you for your comments, sort of allaying any fears that this program is in immediate danger. I just want to tell you, I came to Front Royal in 1948. At that time, Main Street was the main street. We had two-way traffic, parking on both sides of the streets, and parking meters. We had all kinds of business here. We had bowling alley, pool room, two theaters, two very nice variety stores, Newbury's, McCrory's. We even had a cab stand on Main Street. Everybody got along. There was, I'm sure, business people who were unhappy, those that were happy. But there didn't seem to be any consternation. Incidentally, the gazebo wasn't even thought of. There were stores in that area, Stokes Furniture Store and Restaurant Tube, several other businesses. We didn't have the problems that have come to light at this time. But as for the use of the gazebo and the gazebo area, I am very happy that we have people like William who would bring forth an activity that is so beneficial to all of us and including those who come in from other places just to be here and to spend some money. This is what we're looking for. This is what we need. For heaven's sake, the man should be applauded. Look what he's done. He's come into this town virtually unknown. He's known by everyone in a good, very good vein. I like the guy. I don't annoy him now, but I like him. I just want to tell you, I'm in favor of keeping the fair, whatever they call it, in place. Let's have it every year. And for those who would rail against it for blocking Main Street and so on and so forth, it's a good thing. And it can only bring more business to Main Street is what we're looking for. Thank you for your time, but I'm in favor of that activity, the Family Fun Day. Thank you, sir.
Steve Slachina.
Hey, Joey Andrews, 735 MacGeth's Farm Lane, Front Royal. Couple of topics I'm going to talk to John real quickly. Number one, the Property Maintenance Code, I think it's a great idea. We had this in the past and it seemed to me that they focused primarily on residential rentals. And when there was a change in the status of the electric bill, it keyed the folks to come out and, you know, take a look at the properties. I don't know that that was the right thing to do. I think if you adopt the Property Maintenance Code here in the town, that it needs to be all-encompassing. It should include commercial and industrial properties as well, not just residential, not just rental. I know for a fact that in my property, in my situation, I had an official from the town come out and tell me I had chipped paint and a ripped screen and some other things. Well, the property next door was uninhabited. So, you know, it's kind of ironic. That's the way it used to be. If we're going to move forward with it, I think it's a great idea. It should need to be some common sense stuff and I think option C is the way to go about that as well. On another topic, we've got some structures that are outside the historic district that are blighted and currently occupied, but they're in pretty rough shape. And I'd like you to think about taking a look at Jackson's Furniture, not to pick anyone out, but that building is historic. We get that beautiful water tower that sits up there beside it. I don't know what its original purpose was, but you can see it from everywhere in town. A great place to have some, you know, the town logo on it or something other than this ugly black blob that sits there. And the rest of that building is pretty cool too with its round structure and it's just fallen down. So, you know, as we look forward into this maintenance code, I'd like to certainly see that building, you know, come up to code so it's something we can preserve and someday maybe will be in the historic district. And hopefully it'll be, you know, worth looking at at that point. I'm going to move on to the gazebo briefly. I'll touch on that. I like that area. We used it this weekend for a fundraiser. I don't want to see anything changed there. I want it to stay exactly as it is. It cost us about $400 out of pocket just to use that space between paying for the electric, you know, our time to go about all that and the insurance. So it's not cheap the way it is. We don't need to add any additional costs if you folks think about doing something there. You know, as far as parking goes, that area is great to close that parking area down. It makes it safer for any event that's going on in that area. Kids running around. You can't have an event there without closing the parking. Third topic, I want you to look at Main Street in the future with a new light. As Mr. Steele touched on here, I wasn't here in 1948. Wish I was, but... Our Main Street is a jewel. We can, our Main Street is not major thoroughfare. If you look at Mount Jackson, Woodstock, those places, their Main Street is Route 11. They could never shut it down and turn it into a walking mall like Winchester has done. We can do that here and we can do it without costing a taxpayer. And I'm proposing that you folks look at it in the future, something from maybe April to Black Friday, shutting down Main Street, turning it into a walking mall by just simply putting up barricades. Open it back up in the winter so we pop snow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew.
Elaine Ferris.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Elaine Ferris Jarvis. I live at 2 of Wyndham Way. And I wanted to cover two topics. One of the topics comes from option C, which everyone has discussed, I think, in a lot of detail. As a member of the Board of Habitat for Humanity here in Warren County, we get a lot of calls from a lot of these residents who are looking for help and we can't help them. And we hear about horrible things. And as you all know, poor housing leads to other effects. It leads to job performance. It leads to worse school performance. It leads to drug use. It leads to desperation and despair. So from the standpoint of where I sit as a board member and as a resident, I do ask you to please vote for option C. The other topic is the First Amendment. And when I came across this topic, I was reminded of a lot of the things that we covered in law school and that the town attorney addressed. For content-based activities such as political demonstrations, the government may enforce the time and place for their help. And as far as time restrictions, if there's interference, say, in traffic, the town could make some sort of enforcement. But there's no allegations that traffic is being obstructed. As far as places where the protests are held, the court treats public spaces or traditional public forums, like where the gazebo is located, with considerably more care than protests held in non-public places. The Supreme Court stated in Hague versus CIO, "Streets and parks have in memorial been held in trust for the use of the public and time out of mind have been used for purposes of assembly, communicating thoughts between citizens and discussing public issues." Now, there is a distinction, and it's something that, again, I believe the town attorney noticed, that towns may introduce ordinances that restrict free speech for the purpose of preserving public tranquility or something along those lines. I tried to track it on the case that you were referring to, sir, and I believe it was Frisbee v. Schultz, which is a 1988 case. And I believe that's distinguishable because in that case there were picketers that were going to a doctor's house on a private residential street. And in that case, Justice O'Connor took the majority opinion. It was a 6-3 opinion. And they upheld those restrictions. But I think that that is distinguishable from the case of Hammond. I think that the one thing that the protesters that are on the vigil for democracy or the Democratic protesters and the Republican protesters, the counter protesters, can agree upon is that the First Amendment is sacrosanct. And I think that in the case of these protests, I could not find any case law that supported any limitations on any picketing or assembly from the standpoint of loss of revenue. I may have missed it. Those cases may exist. But I still think that there is a very strong public interest in preserving the citizens' right to assembly and protest peacefully. I thank you for considering this. I know that there's much more time to discussion, but I certainly wanted to raise it when we got the chance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Mr. Slachina, did he return?
No.
That was all the speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. All right. Reports. Report of the Special Committee of Town officials and Town Manager.
All right. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to let the citizens know that we are closely monitoring Hurricane Florence. We also started today our pre-storm activities in preparation for this upcoming storm. We do expect heavy rains, flooding, and winds. So we just want to let the citizens know that we are doing all our prep work as we can and that we will be available and we'll be right on top of it once the storm passes and restore our services as fast as we can. That concludes my report tonight, Mayor.
Any questions from council on the Town Manager's report? Okay, none. Moving on to requests and inquiry of council members.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. May I have one word? I didn't see the sign sheet. I didn't see where it was. I'd like to say one word. May I ask a question?
Sure. Tell them you don't want to...
Is it an objection, any?
No objection.
Okay, thank you.
Next time, remember, honey.
I didn't see the sign.
No ice cream for you.
No ice cream. Duly noted.
My name is William Hawk, owner of CNC Frozen Trees for Zerlin, East Manchester. Two topics. With what was spoken, I thank you for your words when you came out here. I'd be more than happy to sit down with you all and discuss the events, all events taking place at the gazebo area and closing it down because we don't want to hurt anybody's business. Never have, never wanted. We want to build the community strong. That's what we're here for, is to come together as a community to build our community strong so we can bring people in from out of state to come here and want to live here among us. Okay? So that's the first thing I would like to say on the issue on the gazebo. Second is the Property Maintenance Code. C is the only option that we have. All of you have been aware that there are raccoons and possums living in a building that is next door to me. You would not live nor would you operate a business next to a building that has raccoons and/or possums living in it. We take preventive maintenance to make sure that they don't get into my location. Have been taking preventive maintenance and have asked for help from numerous organizations and... and nobody seems to wanna come up with an answer that can help. It's time that an answer gets given. It's time somebody steps up and says, "Enough is enough, let's do something." When that building falls, it will take part of my building now. It's there now, it needs to be rectified. So, I ask you to please rectify this situation with voting with C tonight, and reach out to the businesses and citizens, and allow us to help come up with a date, a time, and a meeting to discuss the uses of the gazebo area, because I would like to have mine on a yearly basis, the same weekend, Mother's Day weekend, because it celebrates mothers and it celebrates happiness and joy for all of us in this community. So that's my stance on both of those. So I look forward to hearing from all of y'all on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Can I say something? I'm sorry, I didn't see the sign, it should be...
We'll make one more exception, but we have a meeting to...
Okay, I'm sorry. I just wanted to point out...
Council members will be looking at me, from out...
I'm sorry, guys, I'll be a minute.
I will leave it all to those guys.
I just wanted to point out with option C and why it's so important, I just wanted to point out a few things that people hadn't mentioned. And I don't know if the town council's made aware, but one of our elementary schools had a bedbug infestation, and that came from a child living in one of these apartments bringing the bedbugs to school and then passing them on to people who brought those bedbugs homes to other homes. And that's how those things spread. Adequate housing is what we advocate for at Habitat for Humanity all the time, that's why I'm here this evening, and it's vitally important for not just the adults, but the children to have the proper maintenance done on these properties. And, you know, that's happening with some of the big apartment buildings. That was a big one that brought that infestation to that school. So, I just wanted to really urge you all to vote for that, and then also, I wanted to plan an event at the gazebo, so if you could keep that tuned in, I appreciate it. Thank you so much, and you guys have a wonderful evening.
All right, moving on to question inquiries of council members.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a statement about the report in the Northern Virginia Daily on Thursday, September the 6th, 2016, in regards to our work session on Tuesday, September the 4th. I was quoted as saying churches use the gazebo area for demonstrations. This was interpreted by me and some other citizens in our community as the same as protests. I would like to make a public acknowledgement that that quote was not correct. When I said in the work session, "Was churches used the gazebo area for different events?" and limiting the use of the gazebo would be a slippery slope, and I would just like to add this into the minutes of tonight's meeting, please.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me, Bill.
I had a week with my grandchildren in Colorado Springs, Colorado, and had a great time. The only meeting that I've missed since I've been elected to this board. The, I came back, spent five hours on Main Street on Friday, talking to all the individuals involved in this event about Freedom Act. I spent 26 and a half years in Marine Corps defending that freedom of speech. And I can tell you, what I was hearing was not what you heard. I heard completely opposite from what I'm hearing. Nobody was against freedom of speech. The second thing was nobody was denying that Funday for CNC. We have a serious concern with trying to figure out how we cover all these events over the year. I sat down with each individual involved with that to come up with some options, and I talked to them distinctly about it. And in the next work session, I will present that to the remainder of the council. But I reemphasize, nobody was denying freedom of speech, that I heard, and I talked to everyone. The second thing was nobody was denying that Family Funday should be eliminated. I participated in last year's event. I had a good time. And we as a council have to look at different options to accommodate everybody in our community. So, that's all I wanted to bring out in the open, since I missed the previous meeting. So I went, spent my time down there for you as our citizens to fully understand what actually occurred.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm the one that supposedly has said something that someone's offended about. Whatever it was, I'm not sure, I know that I've said something about the possibility of letting the chamber and the town of Front Royal look after the events on, at the gazebo. There was no intention that there was gonna cut out anything. Like whoever put this on Facebook was wrong. I think it was absolutely, I don't wanna use the word, but I think it's just wrong that if that person would've had an issue with me, he should've came to me before he publicized it to everybody in Warren County, Winchester, whoever's on Facebook. You know, it's a shame that people don't know how to talk to other people, because I did not say exactly what I saw on Facebook. So I'm, you know, I'm pretty annoyed and very upset over the issue. I came here tonight not to say anything, but I felt that after everybody come in here and looking at me as being the person that said these things, I think it's up to me to make that clear. And the next time, if this thing happens, please have the courtesy to come and talk to me and ask me what I did say and what I meant by it. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, moving to the report of the mayor, which I have no report, but I do ask the citizens, like Mr. Wall said, we are preparing for lots of rain and wind. Please keep your inlets open if you have one in front of your house, because once they get clogged, water will run into maybe your neighbor's basement. Water's just hard to control, if you have things in your basement that's flooded before, take your stuff out, use a little bit of common sense and be prepared. That's all I have to report tonight for that. Moving on to proposals and additions, additions and additions.
Mr. Mayor, I move to add item number 12, a proclamation for 2018 National Assist the Living Week.
Motion second, any discussion? Mr. Mayor, roll call.
Councilman Connolly.
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie.
Yes.
Councilman Meza.
Yes.
Councilman Morrison.
Yes.
Councilman Seelaw.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Teal.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I'll add that number 12. All right, moving on to number seven, percentage items, there is being none, there will be no vote. Moving to number eight, council approval for fiscal year 2019's budget calendar. Mr. Mayor.
Council's requested to approve the FY 2019-20 budget calendar as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council to approve the FY 2019-20 budget calendar as presented. Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Mr. Mayor, roll call.
Councilman Connolly.
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie.
Yes.
Councilman Meza.
Yes.
Councilman Morrison.
Yes.
Councilman Seelaw.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Teal.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to number nine, council approval for a budget amendment to accept DMV grants. Mr. Mayor.
Council's requested to approve a budget amendment in the total amount of $12,300 to accept two DMV grants passed through the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration to be used for alcohol and speed selective enforcement in the police department. Both are 50% matching grants from the town in the total amount of $6,150.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council to approve a budget amendment in the total amount of $12,300, 3,850 plus 8,450 to accept two Division of Motor Vehicles grants passed through the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, NHTSA, to be used for alcohol selective enforcement and speed selective enforcement in the police department.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Connolly.
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie.
Yes.
Councilman Meza.
Yes.
Councilman Morrison.
Yes.
Councilman Seelaw.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Teal.
Yes.
Number 10, council approval, property maintenance code enforcement option, Mr. Mayor.
On January 28th, 2018, council voted no unanimously to amend and reenact Chapter 9 of the municipal code to adopt a property maintenance code and to establish a rental inspection district. On June 4th of this year, council asked for a discussion on addressing blighted and derelict structures in the town. Few more work sessions followed in which council was given four options, A through D, best staff to consider. Tonight, council's requested to approve property maintenance enforcement, option B or C, and authorize staff to advertise with public hearing on this selected option.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council to approve property maintenance enforcement, option C, adopt the property maintenance code in full without a rental inspection program, and authorize the advertisement with public hearing on the amendment, then of town code as presented.
Second. Motion second, discussion, gentlemen.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This has been going on, gosh, over two years now, where we've been discussing different options of addressing blighted buildings in our community. Our citizens may or may not know that we actually had a special meeting sometime back with Delegate Collins to go to Richmond and advocated for us to be able to adopt these options that we're talking about tonight. As my understanding, we've talked about doing this for over a decade and have not been able to have essentially the authority to enforce some of these options. Delegate Collins was able to, for lack of better words, get the approval, and advocated for us in Richmond, and so we brought this back to council to decide which options are the ones that we can adopt from the state code and enforce. There's been a lot of discussion back and forth on whether or not, number one, the town has the appetite to enforce rental inspection and property maintenance. Number two, if they were doing it, if we were to enforce it, the costs associated with it, and I think that every person on this council is concerned with spending more money. It's been going back and forth from option B, option A, through option D, I'm sorry, option E. And in the last work session, or I'm sorry, the last work session, the work session before last, there was a lot of discussion around option C, because it allowed for the adoption of the property maintenance code in full without putting a rental inspection program in place. And why is this important? It's important because it was the first step in enforcement program that isn't gonna, that would not compel the town to hire staff to enforce the program, or rather, would allow us to address all structures in the town, maintenance issues, and can be forced on a complaint basis for proactive enforcement. In my opinion, this is a baby step. Option E, which would have meant to adopt the full property maintenance code in full with a rental inspection program and a building inspection department, would have been the full adoption of the property maintenance code rental inspection program. So, I think that some of the concerns that you heard, this is gonna cost money. Option C will not cost us money, it is a baby step to implement the program, it is not full adoption of the property maintenance rental inspection program and a building inspection department, like we've had in the past, which is some of the fears that council members have had. And in my mind, is the most reasonable and frankly, the least aggressive option of moving forward with property maintenance and rental inspection, or property maintenance program. So, I just wanted to make that clear, again, that this is a baby step, it is not an aggressive step. I think it could be option D, and if I had my druthers thought it was a way that we'd be able to get that passed council, I don't think that's gonna be the case. Doesn't cost money, it's not gonna add personnel, and I think that will go a long way in the first step of improving our community and the buildings that are around here.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak to this matter as well. This entire council took the position a long time ago that we needed a change to our charter to implement any of these ordinances. And, as I said, unanimously. That doesn't mean anyone on this council is against the ordinance, what it means is, how do we implement? Now, I heard Mr. Meza say that he's interested in taking the first step. Well, I'm looking out here and I see a lot of parents that have babies, and those babies were toddlers before they were walkers. I'm for stepping into a program that teaches us, other localities that some of you mentioned tonight didn't just implement a full policy, they implemented steps into the process. And that's what I'm offering you. The other thing that was not mentioned was, just implementing this thing, there's gotta be someone that's responsible for the codes. Now, do we go out and get a person, hire that staff? Do we pay somebody that comes in on a time basis? Then when someone challenges these code variances, we have legal fees that we'll be responsible for. I'm also, and I've implemented, you've seen me many times hold up a spreadsheet about our costs, and you've heard me say, everything that we implement has a cost to it. The thing that you're probably not hearing either is the reserve funds that we had in, to implement some of these programs, was taken away here, not, or very recently. Now, we're gonna be looking at a budget that's gonna be extremely tight next year. So I wanna know the full cost of all this implementation. Are we fully prepared to implement full programs? I for one think not. And as I stated, probably each locality learned as they go. They did not just jump in, it's just like jumping in the pool with head first. If you don't know exactly what is being implemented, it's gonna take a lot of study. And I want our staff in this town, plus the citizens, to be prepared to take on these challenges. No one is against an ordinance. We know it's needed. I've lived here 40-plus years after my service and work, and I'm telling you that I have seen in this community some dilapidated buildings that I'd like to see removed. But, I also wanna do it in a proper manner. Because the next time, when the costs come out, I wanna know what they are. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, what's next?
Mr. Morrison?
So, I love this, that this is the turnout. This is not the turnout two years ago. So, I wanna be clear, okay? I want everyone to understand, this is not simply about property maintenance. This is not simply about pretty buildings versus ugly buildings. This is not simply about even the rich versus the poor. This is about identity, it's about ownership. It's generational, you see. Our children, they need to be taught ownership, what it means to take, to take care of something and to have respect. You see, a prime example of this is if you keep a dirty house and you invite a guest into your dirty house, are they gonna offer to take off their shoes? Most likely not. However, if you have a higher standard, hence the word standard, of your home, pride in your home, those people are most likely gonna take off their shoes and follow the standard in which you imply. I've lived this every day as an example. I want to hit on three things. Why I seconded option C, the enforcement of such, because that's the other side of the equation, and then lastly, let's talk about payment options. So, I want people to be proud of Front Royal, and more so, I want more to call it home. Moreover, I want residents to feel safe and protected. I want for homeowners and renters alike to have their dignity, that's right, their dignity, their livelihood, and their resources guarded. I want to start treating homeowners, homeowners and local taxpayers with the same, if not more, respect that we pay for our so-called tourists. I hear all the time that we need to attract more tourists. What about the tourists? What will the tourists think when they come by and they see the depressing, even oppressing appearances and et cetera of our town? Well, what about those that have chosen a Front Royal home? This really boils down to one thing, and that's asset management. Part of, part of the... Part of, part of the wisdom of Solomon was that he established his kingdom with a high standard of beauty. The beauty alone caused kings and queens from all over to come and seek his wisdom. You see, it was the peace alone, that, it was the beauty alone that brought peace to the kingdom. Now, back to enforcement. A very smart person told me not too long ago to provide solutions or even options to oblev problems. So with that being said, let's contract with the private company. Perhaps we will come to the understanding that the county is not exempt or without blight. They are also in need of property maintenance, and perhaps they could be a partner with possible contracts. Let's share a part-time building official with our neighbors, such as Strasburg. Utilize police officers for nuisance abatement. Some would, um, some say we're not ready. Well, I say get ready. Payment options. Now, what about the lack of funding for code enforcement efforts to help clear black? That's the big question. Let's try, for instance, collecting a community improvement fee that funds demolition of dilapidated structures. Or perhaps here's an idea, how about we adopt build Front Royal program or rebuild Front Royal program, which could, which could be a comprehensive neighborhood re-evile, uh, re-evile, revitalization effort. Yeah, bingo. So, and lastly, here's the writing on the wall. If you increase the value of homes and other structures, therefore, tax revenue will increase as well without having to raise taxes. So, that's my soundbite.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, if I may. I've been swayed by the turnout this evening to go ahead and vote for option C. I don't think option B ever made much sense to me, to adopt code with no intention of ever enforcing it or doing anything with it. It's kind of a beachhead for doing something. But I kind of don't agree with anything Councilman Morrison just said either. I think the arguments that made the most sense to me are those that protect the common good, right? I'm not a huge believer in the law, as this brand's teacher, law is enforcement. That's primarily what it is. You can justify enforcement for any number of different reasons, but the, the health and well-being of the community is one of those things that is the best to use as justification for enforcement. So I'm urging the rest of council to, if you're going to consider option C, go ahead and do so, but option B doesn't really make much sense for me, to adopt a code really with no intention of enforcement, has very little reason behind it, in my opinion.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Me too. I was, I was for option D, and I had a meeting today with some colleagues of mine, and I'm gonna find out, option B will do nothing as far as some of our citizens, we've heard the horror stories of people not having heat, things of that nature. I think that is covered in chapter four of the Virginia Maintenance Code, and pardon me if I'm wrong, but I was going through chapter five. And like I was saying, just by adopting chapter one, will do nothing to address some of the problems that our citizens have, so I would like to let everyone know that I too will be voting for C tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else?
At the end, again. In year 2000, I became a member of the town council, and I petitioned the state on numerous occasions to give us the same rights as the city of Winchester or other cities, up until this past year, but Delegate Collins took it before the actual judge. Certainly, they did approve it and gave us the rights that we can do some things such as looking at the enforcement of, to adopt dilapidated buildings, the property maintenance code, and things that were already there. And, but the, the problem we had was the dilapidated buildings. That was my concern in Front Royal. I've been that concerned ever since I was here as Public Works Director for 25 years. Been there ever since, I've been on the council since 2000. Even when I was a mayor, I went to them and requested it, and I've got anything but Delegate Collins, probably got some people down in Richmond to vote in our favor, so I really appreciate that. And by the way, Mr. Still, I remember 1948, on Main Street. I do have a problem though, and again, we've been discussing this issue like someone said two years, and we have, and we haven't got anywhere with it. And again, I'm not a person to jump in the middle of the pond and to can't swim, and that's what we're gonna do. If we do try option C, that's what we're doing. We're jumping into something we have nobody to enforce. We have nobody to go to talk to in regards to that. Somebody says Strasburg had it, they do, but they don't enforce it. They're not enforcing anything. They approved it, but there's no enforcement. We talked about having, John said a few minutes ago, Mr. Connolly, that, that we would try to, you know, go with Strasburg and help, that could help us do this property maintenance program. But again, I'm not, at this point, ready to go into the property maintenance code issue. I think we need to look at our dilapidated buildings. I think we need to look at some other things, and what we can do and what we can't afford at this time. Right now, even if we actually can afford to hire anyone to do this, and we have some money in the budget for a property maintenance code person, for $50,000, where it looks like that, from what I read in regards to the actually requirements of a person to come in here, according to state law, it would be probably anywhere between $80,000 and $100,000 for one person to come and to enforce this particular maintenance code. And so I have a problem tonight, because we don't wanna raise taxes to help to pay the cost of the police department, which is gonna be about $1 million. But here we are tonight talking about adding more money into our budget to, for property maintenance code, that we can't even get this council to vote at 1% or 1 penny tax to this money to pay off the debt for the police department. So I'm in favor of option B, but I cannot sit here and say here and talk about something that I don't think we can enforce at this time. We have no money to do it, we have nobody to do it for us, and with $50,000, it's not a whole lot of enforcement to complete. So I'm against option C. I have been for option B since we started, and I'm still in the same state of mind that we need to start out slow and work towards option C and even D. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, one more statement, please.
Anyone else? Mr. Gillespie.
I just wanna remind everyone that this code is not gonna be a quick fix, and I don't wanna mislead anyone down that direction. I heard some people say about some code issues that were buildings, some of our buildings here in our town were probably built when there were no building codes. And to be honest, we cannot go into a building that was built 70, 80 years ago and require today's standards in those buildings. It's not gonna happen, and I just wanted to let everyone know that, that this will go some way in the helping. I gave some council members tonight some things that are in the code in the agenda, that I think there's some avenues that we need to proceed and go look at, a lot of stuff that can be passed by ordinance, and it goes into houses that are being used by drug addicts, derelict buildings, and some things that we can do as far as ordinance is good. Thank you.
Anyone else?
One more request, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, council will see you off.
I did receive Councilman Gillespie's notes. I had not seen these previously, but my concern is, you gotta crawl somewhere to start before you walk. I'm saying, if we go with B, we implement, then we walk into these other things. See, these are things that was not even mentioned in our notes here tonight and studies, and I read it, back to back, highlighted. Here are things that we're gonna be implementing that we're not even sure of yet, and that's my concern. I wanna be able to walk in this thing with clear eyes, knowing not only what they are, but what they cost. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Yes. I just think it's really important to clarify, first and foremost, we've had the property maintenance code full documented for years now. Every council member's had that, had every opportunity to review it. Now, we have discussed multiple parts of it, that is true, but we've all had the full document. The comments of, you know, having to crawl before to walk, well, Michael Howard learned how to walk in nine months. We've been talking about this for two years. Find yourselves in the middle of the pond, well, if it takes you two years to get to the middle of the pond, you might be directionally challenged. So, you know, I'm, I, you're sensing some frustration, I'm trying to make light of it, because we're not congress, it doesn't take us two years to make a decision on this. You know, it is very straightforward, this is a watered-down approach to property maintenance. In my mind, it's, it is the most baby step you could take, adopting this. There are no financial implications of this, again, that was mentioned a couple more times tonight. The financial implication would be if we contract an inspector for enforcement, which would be on case-by-case basis.
Anyone else?
One time, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate Mr. Meza's comments, but the part that I'm really struggling with, he says that we've had nine months to walk into this thing. Well, we have not had nine months. I told you in the early beginning here, when we sat down and discussed this thing, we had to go to the state legislature first. That was number one, that's your first step. That's how we got here tonight with this ordinance. So there again, it has not been nine months, it's only been a few months that we can finally walk into this thing. So that's my comment on that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just as a general point of information, because I think Councilman Tewol and I are the only two members of council left who were here at that time. When I first came on council, I think it was Councilman Harbeck who referred this to planning commission, so just as a sense of how long that's been, I believe it's more than three years actually, we did set the record straight. And that's, that process started, this process started, didn't actually begin with going to the state legislature, it actually began with a draft being crafted by a planning commission, and I believe both Councilman Morrison and Councilman Meza served on planning commission while I was under discussion.
All right. Ms. Berry, roll call.
For option C, Councilman Connolly.
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie.
Yes.
Councilman Meza.
Yes.
Councilman Morrison.
Yes.
Councilman Seelaw.
No.
Vice Mayor Tewol.
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to council approval. Ms. Berry.
Council's requested to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $545,000 for the purchase of a radio communication system from Molarola Solutions for the police department. Council's further requested to direct town staff to gather information regarding the possibility of an external or internal loan to fund the project.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve a budget amendment in the amount of $545,000 for the purchase of a radio communication system from Molarola Solutions for the police department. I further move that council direct town staff to gather information regarding the possibility of an external or internal loan to fund the project.
Second. Motion second. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, my, so last week, I amended the motion, which is the reason I'm here tonight. Quite frankly, I needed an education, those are, those are really important to have. On the topic, I went on my day off with Councilman, Vice Mayor Tewol, to speak with the town manager. Conclusion of that meeting was that he's gonna provide a brief summary of what exactly is that we're voting on tonight to serve as the same education for the public that I received. All right. Councilman Morrison, what it is tonight, the motion is, the staff is requesting council to approve using general fund surplus in the amount of $545,000 to pay for the radio communication system for Molarola Solutions. This is critical with the progress that we're making on the new police department. Additionally, council has also directed town staff to gather additional information regarding an external or internal loan, and town staff does anticipate bringing that back to council in October, early November for future funding discussions.
Anyone else? Ms. Berry, roll call, please.
Councilman Connolly.
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie.
Yes.
Councilman Meza.
Yes.
Councilman Morrison.
Yes.
Councilman Seelaw.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Tewol.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number 12, population. Ms. Berry.
Council, it's requested to pass the 2018 National Assisted Living Week. Capture the moment.
Motion, gentlemen?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council adopt a red a proclamation, 2018 National Assisted Living Week, capture the moment, for September 9 through the 15, 2018.
Second. Motion second. Discussion? Ms. Berry, roll call.
Councilman Connolly.
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie.
Yes.
Councilman Meza.
Yes.
Councilman Morrison.
Yes.
Councilman Seelaw.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Tewol.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, before I lay the gavel down, I would like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Hopefully you'll be back in two weeks. Meeting will adjourn.